Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, February 21st, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on Travel Dubuque's annual update.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for February 21st, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank. City Manager Van Milligan. City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. So for our work session, we have the Travel Dubuque update. I will turn it over to Travel Dubuque President and CEO Keith Ray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff. My name is Keith Ray, and I am President and CEO of Travel Dubuque, and it is my honor to be here this evening to give this update, and thank you for allowing me to be here. Travel Dubuque, I think this slide kind of says it all. This is the picture on our travel guide for this year of 2022, and it just really gives you a good feel of what we have to offer here in the tri-states, which makes Dubuque a very unique destination, and that is the Mississippi River and everything that has to do with that in our region. Dubuque is the oldest community. We were founded in 1833. This hashtag where Iowa started, we came up with this marketing, this brand about four to five years ago, and it's been extremely effective for us. It really showcases the history that Dubuque has and just the things that make us, once again, a unique destination, where we're proximity to all the major metro areas here in the Midwest. This is our leading tourism destination promotion and development to enhance and expand the Dubuque area experience. This is our mission statement. Our staff, typically they would be here in chambers, but with coming out of COVID and such, I told them, go home this evening. But you can see, I've got an amazing staff. A lot of these individuals have been with me a long time, and I think that's one of the things that I'm most proud of as an organization is just the dedication and how talented this group is. Every day they come to work and really do a tremendous job of marketing and selling our community as a viable destination across the board. We have added, through COVID, we did lose a couple staff members. We have brought Becky Karkeek was our Welcome Center Manager. She has been promoted. She's now a Sales Manager with Julie Kronloggi in our group tour element, and we have hired actually my sister Michelle Ray as Welcome Center Manager. She came on as a volunteer, as a step-on guide in working in the Welcome Center, and then was hired by Sarah Hampton and Becky to replace her. So here are some of the highlights of what has happened and what is to come through this fiscal year that we're in right now and going into the remainder of this year and into early next fiscal year. Riverboat traffic, I think this is one of the unique things. I've been with the organization for 17 years, and we continue to evolve and grow as a destination for these excursion boats up and down the river. In 2021, we had over almost 13,000 passengers that came into the Port of Dubuque at American Trust Plaza, got off the boats, and came out and visited our downtown area and the Field of Dreams and Darwishville, Galena, and other areas and such. So that was significant, and with the beautiful fall that we had, allowed us to host these guests all the way into November. This is an area that I would have thought the riverboat traffic and the group tour component, that's the buses that you see throughout the community, basically pretty much from April through October, that would have been one of the slower things that would have came back with COVID, and actually it's been one of the stronger things that have come back. One of the reasons I asked one of the riverboat owners about that, and they said, well, think about it, a lot of these guests that typically go to Europe to steam up and down the Danube or the other rivers and such, they're not doing that now. They're looking for something. They're coming to the Midwest and enjoying that. So it's been a real boon for us. Next year, when we look ahead in fiscal year '23, we're extremely excited that Viking Cruise Lines will make its debut on the Upper Mississippi River, stopping in Dubuque scheduled 10 times. There will be an estimated between all the boats, the excursion boats, there will be an estimated 125 stops between the four riverboat companies in 2022, and that doesn't take into effect the Twilight that steams up almost daily up and down from Leclerc and also the other big boat that steams up from the Quad Cities, too. Probably one of the highlights of this past year was the game at the Field of Dreams in August 12th of 2021 between the New York Yankees and Chicago White Sox. We worked very closely with Major League Baseball and our partners throughout the entire county to make this an extremely unforgettable event, and across the board, it happened. I think the White Sox, everyone did their part to make it an event that I think everyone will look back and say, where was I that evening when that all took place? It was really a hugely cooperative effort between a lot of different organizations, but you look at it, we couldn't have hoped for anything better. The broadcast, the national, international broadcasts really showcased our area, our rural heritage and such, and it was the most watched game on television since 2005. It was the most streamed game ever for Major League Baseball, and the game was named National Event of the Year, and the baseball park was named Baseball Park of the Year. So that really sets the stage for August 11th of 2022, and I'm extremely excited to say, my team, the Chicago Cubs, will be playing the Cincinnati Reds that evening. We're working very close once again with Major League Baseball and all of our partners to make that an outstanding event. Already, the excitement, you know, for the teams, we've worked directly with the Reds and with the Cubs, and they've never seen anything like it. I had the opportunity last Friday to be on a national webinar with the representative for Major League Baseball and the Chicago White Sox. The gentleman with the White Sox said, this past game, he said, he's been with the White Sox for 30 years. Before that, he was with the Chicago Bulls. He said that that was the greatest sporting environment they've ever been at. He said his players, when they walked out on the field that night, they were like little kids again, reminded them why they started playing baseball. And he told the, it was funny because on the broadcast, he told the gentleman for Major League Baseball, he said, the White Sox will come back whenever we're asked. So that's very promising, and we're great, we're very happy to hear that. But it's very exciting, you know, not only the people, the 8,000 individuals that were able to get tickets to the game, but all the other individuals that came throughout the entire nation to be a part of that activity in 2021. We were able to track data that the state of Iowa gave us, just in the viewing party in Darwishville that night, Thursday night when that game was played, we had large LED screens and such, so there was about 5,000 people there, and the analytics from that, 65% of the people that were at that viewing party were outside of 150 miles. Number-one markets were Chicago, Kansas City, and Omaha. They literally came from all over just to be in the region, to experience, you know, the magic of that game, and we expect this to grow every year and for even more activity to be part of this. So we're very excited about this, you know, once again, for our region, our state, to be able to have that brand. I had the opportunity about 10 days after the game, the governor invited us down to Des Moines and to congratulate us on the game. She was able to be at the game, and she said that was the best four-hour infomercial ever for the state of Iowa, and I don't disagree. It was amazing. Conventions and meetings. What I talked about earlier on in my presentation about the excursion boats and the group tour coming back very strongly out of COVID, what we experienced, the convention side of it has been a little bit slower. Now, we do expect that to evolve and it'll, you know, rectify itself, but it really has been one of the things, the corporate element has been slow to adjust and come back. But we do have, you can see this coming year, we've got some really strong, different events that are coming up in May, June, September, and October, and we're very excited about that, and we're looking very much forward to when that comes back to full throttle the way it was pre-COVID, and you'll be seeing a lot of activity down at the Grand River Center and all of our other partners in the Dubuque city limits. Sister Cities Committee, this is a different commission committee that we took on in working with the city about three to four years ago. You can see, these are the individuals that are on our committee, the different, the three cities that are sister cities with the city Dubuque and such. We had a great exhibit in October down in the Millwork District. The committee was amazing to work with. The reception was extremely good, and we had a photo exhibit that really showcased, and we had also unique food from each one of those communities that the guests could come in and participate and partake in. It was extremely well received, and this is a type of activity that we want to really grow with that committee and such, to really showcase who our sister cities are throughout the world and, you know, how really, how we can partner with them. Our marketing efforts. As we continue, as always, we market to individuals, families, conventions and groups and such, and events, and different, the different athletic teams and such. We saw a significant increase during this timeframe. We don't compare ourselves to 2020. We look at 2019. That was a very strong year. We kind of, we look at 2020 as just a blimp on the radar screen, but we had extremely strong presence from that timeframe. So you can see the different engagements across the board, from the users to the sessions to the engagements on Facebook and Instagram, and just the impressions, which is significant. Our marketing efforts goes going forward. I won't read all of them, I'll just touch on a couple. Taylor Kellogg is our Vice President of Marketing. Taylor is a very talented young lady, and she does an amazing job. She has been with our organization for about 12 years and really has a unique feel for Dubuque and the tri-state area and the how really to market us and such, and she does a great job of setting goals and then achieving those. Basically, the focus on content marketing, work to improve existing content, generate new content, and expand across platforms, and then create strategic ad buys to tell the story of hashtag where Iowa started and promote it as a destination for travel. That's just two of the four, but you can see we do have, and she does a wonderful job of creating these and then achieving these goals. Some of the unique things that we've gone, the niche marketing initiatives that we create, and they're easier to get out on social media, the Hobson Vine Trail that really promote the different breweries and wineries passed throughout the entire county, the 10 Best Series, and people love this, and they really do. This is one of the most highly watched areas on our website is, you know, where are the great areas to go eat or go visit or go with children or different things like this, and we get input from people. She initiated that, like, who has the most unique outdoor seating, and we get just tremendous input from people, and then they vote on it, and then Taylor will put it out there in a article, and people love it that come in from the area. And then the Holiday Hoopla, we just did our second year, and this is really to promote a lot of the unique shopping that we have in Dubuque during the holiday timeframe to get people through their doors, and it's been extremely well received. Our group tours, I talked about this a little bit early on, but that continues to grow. Very proud of this. Historic Progressive Dinner is this one element of it. It's something that was created by the Dubuque County Historic Society. We took it on probably about four or five years ago, and this is something that the groups that come in from all over really enjoy. We've got the 16 for groups booked yet this spring, and then already we've got 23 groups booked for fiscal 2023, and that's just, and that are just the individual, the groups that are going to these different, like the Ham House and other areas throughout the downtown area and such to see this, and that's on top of all the other activity that's going on. The rotating mural, we were in partnership with Voices Production. This is at 105 Locust Street. When you're just coming in, we kind of feel this is like the billboard of the downtown into Dubuque area. Every year, we'll be creating a new mural there with the Voices. We did the baseball theme for last year, for 2021, obviously with the game in mind. This year, we've got a new one. In April, they'll be creating that, and every year, a new artist comes in and does that. So we're extremely excited about that, and like we have, it's artistic gateway for travelers entering Dubuque. Another thing that we're creating, working with the Voices, is the Street Art Route, and they'll be able to, they'll be able to come into our Welcome Center, get an app, and they'll be able to go through the entire area showcasing the different murals, who the artist was, and what is trying, what it is portraying and such. The murals are extremely well received, and we get it all the time, the questions and that, about, you know, how they were created, who was behind it and such. So we're, it's been a great partnership with the Voices for us to get even more information out, you know, to our guests and have that be another element to get guests to come into our area. Our events and such, Tyler Doherty, I know a lot of you know him. Tyler's been with our organization going on 10 years now, does extremely good job for us and the entire region and such. And some of the highlights, he's got listed here, the Dog Dogs World Championship, you know that event, it takes place in the downtown area in October, a lot of dogs barking, and we had a great turnout this year and a lot of activity. Other events that you can see, it was great to get the Iowa Special Olympics back this year, and also the Winter Iowa Games. That's been a staple here in the wintertime, brings a lot of people to the downtown and to the region, and it was awesome to see them back. The Dubuque on Ice Brew Fest just took place this past Saturday, and they were mobbed. That event is amazing, how well they do every year, and it continues to grow, and is a great fundraiser, you know, for those different entities that are involved with it. Upcoming events, we've got the Dueling Dog Road Championships coming back, the Dueling Dubuque International Film Festival, that's exciting. That's going to be here the end of April. That's always an amazing event that brings a lot of activity at a great time of the year. The Vintages Torque Fest, depending on the weather, that's out at the fairgrounds and can bring in a lot of activity, so we're excited about that. Other things we've got coming up, Food Truck Friday, a big motorcycle Harley-Davidson Rally that'll be here July 21st to 24th. Dog Dogs World Championship will be back again in October, and then the Beyond the Game, that's the activity, the two-day event that we created around the Major League Baseball game. Once again, for all the guests that can't get to the game with tickets, they can come in and experience that with all kinds of different activities. From this year, we're going to have a Fan Fest where we'll have former Major Leaguers, Cubs, and Reds, they're signing autographs, and also a lot of other things with different concerts and such. So it's very exciting to be able to really move on and be able to create these events and just have a lot of things for people to see and do throughout the area. Staff updates, I talked about this a little bit early, but Becky was promoted. Becky's been with us about five years, and she's been promoted to Sales Manager within the organization, working exclusively with the group tour industry, and then Michelle has been, has come on to fill the Welcome Center Manager role. And here are results of the tourism industry impact that have been reported to date, the data. I always enjoy this, it's the heat map in regards to where, from the different analytics that we get specifically from this Buxton Mobile Liptics, is where the people are coming from, and you can see it from January 1st to the end of December this year, where the brunt of our activity is coming. You know, heavily the Chicago, Dane County, those metro areas, but you know, throughout the entire, you know, region, throughout the entire country, the different hotspots where people are coming from. And this just gives you a percentage by community. For a while, New York was up there pretty high, had to do with the game and such, but this is always very good information for us also. And just the volume from 2020 to 2021. This is the traveler-related expenditures, and we put this slide in, this is the information we get each year from the state of Iowa. It's very impactful. I was just on the phone earlier about the, when someone was asking me in regards to this specific amount, this numbers, when the Port of Dubuque came online, and that was the significance, that was about 2002. Those years aren't on here, but just the growth that we've seen through this time period for Dubuque and the county has been significant with everything that has happened in Dubuque and the entire county and region, but take a look at when 2020 hit and how the decrease with the lack of, lack of travel, how we went significantly down. Now, we'll get 2021, these numbers always fall about a year behind. We get this from the state of Iowa. We'll get those numbers in September, but we expect to see a significant uptick in these traveler-related expenditures with the last year with coming out of COVID and just all the other activity that I've already talked about and is going on. OXY, the 20, the first line item is the Star Report. That's, that's information we get from the state each year, compares us, we're one of the 10 counties that it compares to, but you can see overall where we finished in 2021, we're just about at 54%, and the other counties, which we are part of, were 51.3. So we, from an Oxy standpoint, we did better. Now, how does this compare to pre-COVID? Our 2019, we were at just about 62. That was the highest that we'd ever been, long as I've been here. So we're still down, but we continue to see this evolve, and we continue to see the numbers grow and such. The biggest thing for us, you know, we continue to be incredibly strong market for weekend. It's that midweek business, you know, with corporate travel and that, just now it's come back. We're not unique in that, that's across the board. Every market you talk to has experienced that same thing. Once we see that start to come back and evolve, you're going to see these numbers come back to where they were pre-COVID. The tax records, this is incredibly encouraging when you look at this. This is a hotel-motel tax that is generated from this. If you look at our fiscal year '23, that's the highest number by far that we've ever been at, and when you look at that quarter two and quarter three, so the, how Travel Dubuque receives the money from city Dubuque, and I'm incredibly appreciative of this, is we get actual money that comes in. Other DMOs, like my peers for cities, if it's received in quarter two, it's put out in quarter three. So when we went through COVID, that was substantial. It allowed us the ability to be able to plan our budget, to be able to offset those losses, because you see in 2022, the significant drop in the hotel-motel tax throughout, you know, and we were able to plan for that. But when you look at this, and you look at quarter two, which would have been, would have been, well, let me go back, quarter three was the highest total we've ever been. That was July, August, and September of this last year of 2021. And then we had May, April, May, and in June, that was the highest quarter ever for, so you can see the trend here, that we're coming back out of COVID, and our numbers from a hotel-motel task are growing significantly, and that's extremely exciting for all of us. Here's a budget that will allow us to continue our impact in fiscal year 2023. As always, the Travel Dubuque has a nine-person board, and we meet every month. We present, I present this budget to them, and then they approve it. We bring it to the council, and then we allow you, you look at it, and then what we'll do is, once we get to June, because between now and June, there's going to be different elements that come up within our organization. Things might occur that we have the opportunity to participate in and such, then the board votes on it once again, so just FYI on that. As we look, we've got three different line items here, as where we're at the end of December for 2021, our approved budget for fiscal year, where we're at right now, and our proposed budget for next fiscal year. Really, the biggest thing I can see in that is Bureau Services. This is an income standpoint, there's about an $80-some thousand jump in revenue that we're anticipating. That really is for different events and different services that we are contracted to do, that during the COVID time period, we're not there. Now they're coming back and allowing us to be able to get that revenue into our organization. The other big thing, the significant jump, is the hotel-motel tax, you know, the split between what was created there and such. So it does bring us to just about $1.8 million from an income standpoint for this next fiscal year. Convention from the expenses, when you look at this, there's not a lot, a whole lot of difference from a convention standpoint. One thing that is, that we do have budgeted for this, for fiscal year '23, is a growing sustainable conference. We do work with the city in regards to that, to make that happen and such. We are anticipating that that will take place this year in person and such, so you can see that we do have a expenditure for that. The Sports Commission is a little bit higher. There's some different events that Tyler is looking, that we're looking to bring in this next fiscal year and such, so we're a little bit higher than what we were this last year in that. And then the group tour marketing, that really, just the group leader development, that really is the amount of boats that are coming in and our costs with the step-on guides and such, but we're offset with that, with the increase in the Bureau's services from an income standpoint. Then the media, the marketing, the, that's where we're at from a budget standpoint, allows us to be about what we typically would have been before COVID and such, right around that $250,000 amount. And then the awareness development, pretty spot on to where we would be on a normal year, not really anything there. One of the things this year, we're a little bit ahead in regards to where we typically would be, just because we've been working with different partners, and we've done some feasibility studies for a project that wasn't budgeted, and so we've taken those on, but we're going to be reimbursed once that project comes to fruition. Salaries and benefits, a little bit higher, but what we're looking to do there, because once again, coming out of COVID, we're one staff member under on our marketing department, so we have budgeted to potentially hire a new marketing person working under Taylor, and then also, we are, because of all the boats, the riverboats coming up, and we've got to bring on 15 additional tour guides, step-on guides and such, we brought that group in also under our salaries, that hasn't been before. They were paid as independent contractors. Talking with our accountants, they said, no, you should probably bring them on, so that's why that's a little bit higher than what it, you know, typically would be. But everything else from administrative operations and facilities is all spot on with where we typically land and such. So as of right now, typically, we're in that, usually about that $25,000 in the black. This year, as of right now, we've budgeted just about 246 to be in the black at the end. That more or less will more than likely change as we get closer to the fiscal year, but really, it allows us, you know, coming through COVID, we've been able to put money into reserves, that's been able, that's really helped us dramatically through COVID, but also has allowed us to participate in some major projects that are going to be coming up on the horizon here in Dubuque County. And that is my presentation for this evening, and I would open up for any questions that anyone would have.
Well, Keith, thank you very much. This is, it's just incredibly exciting to see the news that you have to share with us, and we really appreciate it. We have run up, right up to the start of our city council meeting, so I think what we'll do is, if we do have questions, we can send them your way.
Okay.
But like I said, we appreciate all the information you were able to share with us. It's pretty hard just to sit here, we want to kind of just jump up out of our seat and go enjoy all this exciting stuff that you're talking about. I mean, it's going to be a really exciting year for Dubuque, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and I do have to say, just in my role through the years, I've said this, city Dubuque is amazing to work with, incredibly supportive, anything that we need as an organization, they always step up, and we greatly appreciate it very much, so thank you.
Thank you, and you've been a great partner as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, there being no further business in this work session, we will stand adjourned.